United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, what'd you do? Roll call, please.
Mayor, fine.
Here.
Alderman Clark, here. Alderman, thank you.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett. Alderman Edman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman France.
Here.
Alderman Stagg.
Yes.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. This time, we'll move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I think at this point, we'll skip down to, we have personal appearance tonight. Jeffrey Schroeder with B. St. Cade Rowan Schroeder is here. Go over our annual audit report.
Good evening. It looks like you've got plenty to do tonight, so I will try not to add to it any more than we have to. No, we really appreciate the opportunity to do the audit for the city again this year. Everything from our perspective went very well, so what I have is a very routine and probably a boring report, but when it comes to governmental auditing, routine and boring is usually a good thing. So I will tell you that when we do an audit of financial statements, we have two reports that we issue. The first report is our report on your financial statements. And that report says, and I promise, this is the only sentence I'm going to read to you, I will not read to you anymore out of this report, but it explains in that report that the financial statements of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the remaining fund information is fairly presented in all material respects the assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenses of the city in accordance with modified cash basis of accounting. That sentence is what makes it an unmodified opinion or clean opinion. That's the opinion that you want on your financial statements. And that report does go on to explain in quite detail what the city's responsibilities are for the financial statements and what my responsibilities as the auditor are. I'll let you check that out on your own if you're having trouble sleeping some night. But the, the report does kind of finish up with a couple of paragraphs I'll tell you about. One of the paragraphs explains that there is a lot more information in this bound document that you have than just your basic financial statements. There's a lot of additional supplementary schedules and that we have applied procedures to the additional information as well. And it's our opinion that those, the extra information is also fairly stated, so we extend our opinion to the other information. And the last paragraph of the report explains that whenever I do an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, I'm required to issue a separate report. And that report has to do with the city's internal controls over how we accumulate and, and gather information to be able to prepare financial statements. That's the first part of the second report. It explains that we don't actually issue an opinion on the internal controls, but in order to conduct the audit, we have to understand what controls are in place and whether or not they're working to be able to conduct the audit. So if we would find something that we would consider to be a deficiency in the controls, this is where we would report it. So the report goes on to explain that we found no deficiencies and the internal controls are in place. So that means the testing that we did, we found that the internal controls that are in place are appropriately designed and our tests found that they were working the way they were designed. The second part of that report has to do with the city's compliance with various regulations and laws and contracts and grant agreements. So things that are financially in nature that we're also testing to determine whether the city complied with those requirements. And we found no instances of non-compliance to, to be reported there. So we've got a clean opinion on the financial statements, no deficiencies in the internal controls, and we found no instances of non-compliance for our testing. So that's about as clean a report as, as we can do for the city. Now, the financial statements themselves, I normally don't spend a lot of time going back over the details of the numbers. I know you get your financial reports, I know you're aware of your financial condition. Plus, by the time we would be talking about it, it's already four months ago. So what I would offer you, offer to tell you is that while, while we were applying our, our tests of the data, we did not recommend any significant adjustments to those numbers. Sometimes when I go through an audit, I'm giving the financial statements and we start testing them, and in order to put that clean opinion on it, sometimes we have to make quite a few changes. But I offer that to you, that we did not recommend any significant changes to those numbers. And, and to me, that would be important because that means that the numbers that you've been relying on to make decisions about adopting a budget for this year, how much money you've got available to spend, that information you were relying on was materially accurate to start with even before we came in to do our audit. Now, last year, I believe, we talked about some new rules and some new ways of doing some accounting. Would offer to you that this year, there were no new accounting rules or requirements, so things are consistent from this year to the previous year. One of the things that we do as part of the audit is, you know, we're looking at the city's estimates. There's quite a few estimates that have to go into these financial statements. Probably one of the more significant has to do with depreciation methods, estimated lives of assets. One of the things we do is we look at all of the city's estimates that are involved in the financial statements and whether or not they are sound in accounting principle and reasonable. And we found that those estimates were appropriate and, and nothing that caused us any concern. But otherwise, the financial condition and the, and the statements themselves seem to be very stable from one year to the next. So like I said, that in, in case that be any concern. So that is the very brief version or synopsis of what you have in your report there. One of the things I would do is if anybody has any questions about what we did or what we found or how we went about the work that we were doing, I'd be glad to answer any questions in my mind.
I don't really have any questions and stuff, but I just like to compliment our staff for doing such a good job.
But I, that, that would make perfect sense. One of the things that, at this point of the meeting, a lot of times I smile and thank everybody and, and wrap up the, the comments, but when it is the case, I like to share what our experience is working with the people that, that, that you have responsible for the information. We, we bother a lot of people when we're working on an audit. And everybody that we work with here at the city has always been very professional, very helpful, very, very courteous and, and pleasant to work with. And so that's been our experience and I'm glad to be able to share that with you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else conduct an audit of the city finances besides you, State of Missouri?
To my knowledge, the State of Missouri accepts the report that we issue. It's submitted to them and unless they had any, any reason to, to do any other work like from a petition, if enough registered voters were to sign a petition requesting an audit, they would come. But to my knowledge, they rely on the work that we do.
Are you familiar with Dixon, Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And do we have controls in place that would avoid that where one individual put fifty-seven million dollars?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think still the largest embezzlement in the United States. One of the, the things that they were doing was that there was one clerk and one person who was responsible for seeing expenditures. It's one of the first things that we look at whenever we're looking at controls is does, how many people does it take to actually execute a check and get the money out of the account? And if they're, if one person can do all of that, that's the first deficiency in internal controls I'm going to talk about. It had a lot of that to do with Dixon. What they were able to do is they had an extra bank account that the, the council was not aware of, the auditors should have been aware of but will not. And the clerk would be able to take money and transfer it. She would make expenditures recorded in the books that looked legitimate, but they were payments over to the other account. And the other account was one nobody knew about, and then she was able to write checks to herself out of the other account. Now, one of the things that that auditor should have known about was that that account existed because they had prepared these standard forms. We do the exact same thing. We send it to the bank. Please make us a list of all of the accounts the city has and what was the balance in those accounts on September thirtieth. And we get those forms back. They did, and that extra account that nobody knew about was listed with a balance. And nobody asked the follow-up questions like, I wonder why I've got this account that's not on the books anyway? But that's something that we do check with. We send these forms to every bank and we're specifically looking for those types of things. So between the, between the knowledge of all of the accounts the city has and the idea that it takes at least two people to, to execute a dispersment, that's, that's why we don't think that Dixon's going to happen here.
You know the other thing what Dixon is famous for?
What's that?
First place of Ronald Reagan.
Oh, really? I did not know.
That was what they were known for up until.
The, there, there's a fabulous, actually, I, I'm an auditor, so of course I'm going to geek out on something like this. There was a, a kind of a quasi-documentary movie that was, I think it's on Netflix. It's called All the Queen's Horses.
Great.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I think people sitting at the city council all should be made to watch.
It, it's actually, it's interesting and it would be very useful, but yeah, as an auditor, that's, that's almost required viewing at our office.
It's about horses.
That's where all of the money went for was she was into show horses.
And it's a very small salary. Dixon is a hundred and ten miles west of Chicago on the Rock River towards the Quad Cities.
A very small town, too.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Really?
Fifty-seven million without a fifteen thousand.
I think it was about eleven years.
Eleven.
About eleven years.
And what did she embezzle?
Embezzle right out of the city money going around.
How many dollars?
Fifty-seven.
Oh, fifty-seven.
Cats.
Yeah, it amazes me. You would think somebody would notice fifty-seven million dollars.
Small savings. I hope nobody noticed fifty-seven dollars. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Cool. Well, thank you, Mr. Schroeder, for joining us tonight.
You're very welcome.
For presenting your audit.
Always glad to get a chance to visit with you about how everything went, because I know that's something that everybody's interested in, want to know.
Yeah.
How, how folks are handling the money you're responsible for.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Yeah, have a safe trip, bud.
Thank you very much.
Move to city administrators' report.
Well, I've had a report at your seats. We'll recover item five. We got equipment on order for the wireless access point at the parkhouse. This is for a public access. Library had looked at putting one up there, but they couldn't get a, they couldn't get it to work up there at the time. We've now figured out a wireless way to do that and we put it in our arc of funds, so that's where the money's coming from for the equipment to install. So the wireless, the wireless part has been installed to where we get the signal for getting on the internet. We just have to get our own router and antenna. And it will cover pretty much just the area around the parkhouse. It, it's not, it will not go part wide. We don't have that much of a big enough system. Item six, staff has completed performance reviews and we'll get those done by the end of January. Next month, you'll have my performance review in one of the work sessions by the first one, so I'll bring that to you. And we'll move back to city hall, scheduled for Monday, February nineteenth, that you hadn't heard yet. Board tables installed, you probably saw that in the newspaper as well as the office furniture. Alliance is going to be working tomorrow to install some TV brackets. We have the TV station monitor that we have to put in the back of the boardroom and then one, another one out in the lobby. So we've got to get that down. We saw some patching and drywalling to, patching up the drywall and some painting to complete because there were some last-minute items that had to be corrected. And those have been corrected, so we're there.
So you're reviewed next month. It just kind of happens that our review of the city just happened tonight. Now you're next month and you're in charge of the city, so that was good timing.
Well, and part of it is, so all my supervisors got all their performances done first, so like don't go in there and say, well, didn't you get theirs done? Why aren't you doing yours? Yeah, no, I'm not stealing fifty-seven million dollars.
Like I said, fifty-seven dollars, I hope we were fine.
A couple of other items. Number one, we talked a little bit about MoDOT on that one. Not, maybe wrong. We talked a little bit about the potential of doing away with the five-light intersection and just going back to a standard four-light intersection.
So they want to do, if we're going to do something like that, they've recommended that we look at what's called a TEEP. It's a transportation engineering program that MoDOT has. Have them look at that intersection, come up with some ideas, because just getting rid of the fifth light is not going to open it up for right-hand turns. Because of the pedestrians that, that are at that intersection, it is not, it's not drawn to the MoDOT specifications that they now require. So you're looking at the little concrete islands that are around those.
And we're doing some of that sidewalk work right there, are we not?
They're doing the M Highway part of it.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's it. They're not doing the intersection itself, and that would be another major construction project.
Sure. It'd be, but I mean, if we build that, at least that one side of the corner, if we do go to a four-light intersection, is that going to meet that sidewalk grant? Is that going to meet the requirements if we would go back to a four-light intersection?
That would be part of it.
Yeah.
The rest of it is the, the other, putting up the crossing lights, you know, putting the crossing marks in like they're supposed to and these curb abutments that they want to install there. So the area engineer gave me kind of a, a rough, rough drawing of how it would look. It would, it would take some refashioning of that and asking that property owner to close that entrance exit at that, at that point where the light is now, or where the light regulates now.
Yeah. They, they have control whether that stays as a five-light or not?
I think they have to be, I was told that we needed to request that they, they curb that, they have to curb that section, so.
The property owner or?
Yeah.
MoDOT would have to.
Property owner.
So you're talking about blocking that light coming out of the gas station?
Yeah, getting rid of that fifth light.
Yeah, I don't like that.
And they're saying the property owner has to.
That's what I was told. It may change in between time, but we still don't have the correct configuration of the intersection to make that pedestrian-friendly at this point.
Okay. City, the surplus office furniture, can you give us a rundown again just to let public know how they might bid on that or put in offers or what's the process with the surplus furniture?
Stop by, take a look at the furniture here at forty-four Plaza Drive. We have a bid sheet that they can fill out. We have it on site. Mark down what you think you want to bid on the, on whatever piece of office furniture, like a ton of gray chairs, we'd love to get rid of those, the office cubicles.
And chairs, office cubicles, what else you got on there, Randy?
Tests, individual desks, yeah. A lot of the smaller stuff and the shelves we're going to take with us and also the filing cabinets are going because we can't unload those yet because we're going to do that the day we move. So then we'll unload all those and we may have filing cabinets for surplus after that, but at this point, I want to be able to move everything back. We unload them into our new filing cabinets and then we'll store them.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Happy. Move on to staff reports. First up tonight is Chief Trump.
Evening. We have a copy of the report. Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank the board for the new office furniture. It's all set up on the P D side. We're happy with it. Set up nice, furniture's nice, so we appreciate it. I did get bids for the final part of the police project, which would be the sign to go outside, so we're going to do something similar to what city hall bid. So that's been submitted to Happy. We did have a vehicle involved in an accident with a deer strike. Proper photofall was covered or done with it. The car that's shot being fixed now. And I submitted numbers for the month and then I submitted overall numbers for last year with a comparison to twenty-twenty-two, so you can see where we're at.
What's your executive summary of where we're at for last year?
For the most part, I mean, we were pretty even. Calls for service were up a little bit, which is not uncommon to fluctuate. I mean, it was a very small percentage, less than 10%, so right now we're pretty much holding steady. As far as types of crime was pretty much similar to what it was last year, or the year before, I should say.
What leads to pack in terms of types of crime?
I can get you a breakdown of the exact, I don't have the numbers of exact crimes.
Just from your estimation, serious crimes?
Serious crimes, I would say probably domestics are, are leading.
Really? Did I see something in the paper that we had a significantly higher domestic rate than other cities we were compared to?
I don't know. I know, I saw an article where somebody had pulled numbers. I would take it off the state reporting and done comparisons, but I haven't seen the report. You know, and a lot of, a difference with our city compared to a lot of cities, a lot of cities only will write a domestic report if there is an action taken. We write a domestic report on every call that we go to that's a domestic related so that it's documented for future if there would be an incident. So our numbers, we force our guys to write a domestic on any domestic that they respond to.
So it could be a methodology difference.
Correct, yeah. So some may be responding to just as many, they're just not reporting as many as we are.
So if somebody calls and said, policeman over here, accurate fight going on next door, that is reported?
If, if we show up and it was proven to be a domestic violence, it is still a documentary report.
Jason, the accident, the deer strike, was that on a take-home car?
Yes, it was.
Were there any entries?
No, no entries.
I suppose into the deer.
The deer.
Yeah.
Close in the deer.
Anything else? Good. Thanks, Chief. And next up, Steve Wilson with Alliance.
Evening, everyone. Few highlights of them on the report that you guys were given. Electrical work at the water plant has been progressing, currently progressing very nicely this month. Bruce Terry and his crew showed up at the, during the last week of December, and they have showed up every day since. And they're more than 50% complete, switch over. So, so that is good news. Electricians they have there are, they're, they're pretty, pretty impressive to watch work, so.
I'm sorry, what are we doing there that we're switching?
The internal electrical components at the water plant were corroded due to the chlorine in the air. And they're proposing hazards, feeding electric in wrong directions where it shouldn't be, backfeeding on other items. Excessive replacement of electrical motors. So we're taking our electrical controls and components and moving them out to a separate building and tying them all in so they're not exposed to that environment.
Is that sewer line for the new restroom in the park, is that a major issue or?
No, nothing. No, there's a, there's a current heat enforcement for the grinder station already in place right
Streets, talk a little about salt and chat. I've gotten two complaints in myself. And I know I've gotten some information from both you and Happy about, but I want to know kind of our policy as far as street sweeping in the winter months and how that goes. If there's ever been a time that where we need it, that, that salt and gravel and sand and chat is really heavy on the streets.
Yeah.
And I understand there's a cost with winterizing the sweeper versus having it in-house where it doesn't have to be winterized. You don't have the room because of snowplows and whatnot. So kind of what's the policy, I guess, on how you handle street sweeping in the winter?
If temperatures are above freezing for a period of time, which the past few weeks have shown we weren't, then we would be, we could pull the sweeper out, unwinterize it and put it to use. If there's a chance of freezing, it could spray some mist of water on the road. It contains water in there right now.
To keep dust down or is that to make it easier to sweep up and whatnot?
Dust control.
Yeah, okay.
So in the event that we can, and we have the opportunity, we will run. In this past two weeks, we have fixed water main breaks every single day and haven't had a chance to even look at it.
Yeah. I, I know a lot of the cities, you know, concerned about that sand getting into stormwater and, and into creeks and whatnot, same with salt. So I think it would be something that we try to pursue. I know four-inch water mains break are more important than street, street sweeping, but it's that, that balancing act of how you try to balance that. So I'm curious about that. Not bored the whole, bored with that right now, but I think it would be a good idea to find a way to keep that machine where it doesn't have to be winterized so if we have a chance to.
Yeah, and that'd be something we would have to budget for. We don't have the facilities to store our snowplow removal equipment inside and the street sweeper and the tanker truck for the water plant, so.
You would need just one parking spot or, or more?
No, I got other parking sites outside now.
That sweeping up salt, I mean, salt's gross, dude. I mean, what do you got to break that chain down then?
Yeah, we got timber tools that we would, basically rinses the salt off and then deactivates it twice a day. We use it on all the snowplow equipment on the trucks. Have we ever swept in the winter before? I believe sand had been swept off the streets before, but I don't think salt was the purpose.
Well, most time I don't get to it because of the weather probably hits.
And if it's just going to be one or two warm days, I mean, we're not going to be winterizing just for that, we didn't do it for a long period.
But I see that, well, your last, your last snow event, how much, how much time did the aggregate just put down? Roughly, I'm not trying to.
Say fifteen times?
That's it? So all that sand and salt is going down in our stormwater and into our creeks. I mean, it's, it's a significant impact. If you want to know why our creeks look the way they do and there's no wildlife there, I'm not a big tree hugger, but the sand is almost worse than the salt. Not going to be salt tonight, but I just wanted to put a bug in there.
Anything else on that?
During the month of December, we drained the claricon. Many of you have been inside the water plant, seen the claricon, we've seen how large it is. We accessed that from the top, washed it from the top to the bottom, cleaning it out annually one every December. That was completed. Tree trimming on the list is all completed and we also had another large tree at the wastewater plant fall and took out about sixty feet of fence. Anybody's driven past the water plant, the white vinyl fence around the water plant is subject to some wind damage again.
Got it?
Need that covered by insurance.
Thanks, Happy. Last but not least, tourism director, Aaron Smith.
Evening, everyone. Got a lot more to report on than I did last time. So first off, of course, my wife and I are settling in nicely. We all moved in, so we're full-fledged St. Genevieveans now. Very exciting. Been very active getting out in the community, attending meetings, meeting business owners at their shops, so once the weather lets up, I'll continue doing that. Wonderful grant opportunity across my desk a couple of weeks ago that I jumped on. Missouri Humanities earmarked $20,000 grant for our French Heritage Festival. $10,000 of that goes to creating a promotional video for the festival and funding activities we want to put on during that. The other $10,000 is an in-kind donation from Visit Missouri where they will market the event for us. Not only will this be a big boost for one of our hallmark festivals, but we will start to build a relationship with Missouri Humanities, Visit Missouri, and the Missouri Arts Council for future funding. Grants will play a big role in, in how I look for funding moving forward. So this is a great opportunity. Part of accepting that grant means I need to attend three different conventions put on by each of the organizations. And the first one is next week where I'll be attending the the fairs festivals convention in Osage Beach. And on top of that, just this week, Missouri Arts Council reached up and gave us an additional chairman grant of five thousand dollars. So that that total of twenty thousand is up to twenty five thousand. So that's a great, a very little chunk of change. In December, McDaniel's Marketing visited St. Gene for the December TTC TAC meeting. They gave a presentation to that board on the approach, on their approach to creating a master marketing plan for us. We helped them distribute a survey to various leaders in town and business owners. That's what I put on the table for you guys. It's nothing groundbreaking in that report. It's just a survey from from different people and they they summarized it, but you'll see kind of which way they're leaning and how they're going to go about building our plan. And if you didn't get a chance to meet any of those guys, very sharp group, they know what they're doing apparently. Happy told me they've been wanting to work with us for a number of years now. They they their experience is in small, marketing, small towns, small historic towns. So it's I think it's a perfect fit and they really did it. We should have an initial draft of that marketing plan in a couple of weeks. They're really on top of it. And once that plan is in place, they'll help us apply for funding to execute that. I've also graciously by you guys been given a budget for an assistant. We decided to call that position the social media coordinator to match the name and its job responsibilities. Make it consistent with the marketing industry. Put an ad in the Herald as well as on Instagram and Facebook. I've received some great interest from some really qualified candidates. I've interviewed two already and will continue to accept applications and conduct interviews for the next couple of weeks.
What's the skill set you're looking for with that?
People that that are really organized that can kind of help me plan our marketing strategy. What I what I want to do and what I what I see is there's a. You know, you have all these different groups that are putting on events sometimes on the same weekend. But to get tourists to take notice, I think we need to kind of make a cohesive effort to to bring that information together. And to let people know exactly what's happening and when that's happening. And ideally, I'd like to start marketing for an event two months out. So having somebody on the ground that can that can help me organize for that is going to be really helpful.
How many hours a week will that be?
Sixteen to twenty-four. And the starting pay is eighteen dollars. Yeah, that's nice. So yeah, I won't leave any stone unturned. And other than that, I I put my focus on our social media accounts, our Instagram and our TikTok. I've really been bolstering those. This will be a slow steady campaign, but we've already seen thirty plus new followers to our Instagram account. So it's it's somewhat steady, but it's gaining, so yeah, feel good. Any questions and any concerns?
I guess I was going to follow Joe Steiger. I read something in the paper today about at the last TAC meeting or something that you were aware of Jefferson County. You were asked this, ended up with a substantial grant to their tourism board.
They have a much larger one, so their their co-marketing grant that they received from the state was much larger than ours. Because of population and size, I can't remember the criteria on, but we've always gotten the max and we've gotten that for the last fifteen years or so. But because of their size, they I think were, I think they received one hundred thousand dollar one. And it's a fifty fifty match and then they put in there, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars. So ours is twenty-five. I think ours is twenty-five, we receive the max that we can get at twenty-five.
And so it's based on the size.
Can't remember.
Creativity or whatever the festival is or something, yeah. My other question would be regarding the eclipse. What planning are we having? There are surely hundreds if not thousands of people new in town on that Monday. I bring it up only because seven years ago, it was the first weekend we opened up. And on Monday, people were lined up asking if we could sell them breakfast because no place was open for breakfast on Monday morning. And the ones that were ran out of food with that. There was like no preparation, the businesses thought it was just routine. What do we have both for entertainment and for getting the business community ready for this influx?
Right, I mean, that's that's a very question because, you know, it is a multifaceted sort of thing. So what we have going on right now is on February seventh, all the people that are planning something, so the Chamber of Commerce, the National Park Service actually got a grant. For the eclipse, day of the eclipse, to put on some sort of activity, community centers putting on activity. So we've got a group of people, I think, that were at the the meeting for the eclipse in September before I was hired. So we're going to get that group back together on February seventh, but.
There's events planned for both Sunday and Monday.
Sunday and Monday.
And February seventh at the community center, there is a second meeting for preparation for that. So you're more than welcome to come and sit in or I'll give an update. I plan on being there for that one, too.
And I'll send you an invite for that as well, but this is a new issue that's been brought up to me. I think this is definitely something serious that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, a lot of first time visitors coming to see the clips, we want them to have a nice impression when they leave that we have our packed together outdoor entertainment availability of.
And nothing's going to make people more mad than if they can't get through.
There's events planned downtown for Sunday and out of the community center on Monday.
Music on that kind of Sunday.
I think maybe even both. They're going to use the community center parking lot, the water park area in that facility. The community center is going to host an event out there during the day. And then they're going to host an event downtown like at the Valley Desert Parking Lot Core Events on Sunday.
And I think the National Park Service on Monday, maybe Sunday, too, with their grant funds are going to try to get the trolleys going back and forth between downtown and the community center. So I think that's.
That's the main viewing areas of the community center.
Yeah, that's where a public event is happening, so.
It's a high point and it's obstructed, so. We can bring that up to Dina, too, what he mentioned about the restaurants with the Chamber of Commerce and maybe she can push out something through her.
I think we were told all the hotels are booked already. All the hotels and a lot of the Airbnb, most, I think most rooms are booked at this point.
Right.
So you're you're absolutely right, it's going to be the same kind of issue.
Let's listen. Audubon's isn't open for breakfast usually and that Monday morning it will be a class of breakfast.
Happy, I had a question, not necessarily with tourism and stuff, because you know, we keep hearing about all these grants and stuff. I mean, is like tourism, they're responsible, I mean, they get made aware of all these grants or they have a source to go to find all of those? And whether it's tourism or stormwater or, you know, whatever it might be, or is there a collective that you can go to and find out about all the possible grants that are out there?
There's no central site you have to be aware of or be connected to and get the emails from whatever department is offering that grant. So it can be Department of Public Safety, Department of Economic Development, Department of Tourism. I mean, just Missouri Humanities is a is a separate organization that's not part of the state, but they have their own grant funding sources. So we just hope to hear about them or get contacted. And in Aaron's case with the humanities group, that they were looking for our particular project and wanted to be toured with it. And then he took the reins on it and talked with the Foundation for Restoration and brought it to brought to them to figure out how to make it work.
Yeah, so a little bit of politic involved, you know, you've got to be out there. So that's what's great about having to go to these conventions is I'll get to meet more people and hopefully, you know, put a bug in the air that we're looking for more grants if they want to give it to us.
It just seems like there's a wide assortment of out there, free money and stuff that you almost got to stumble onto it or like said, know somebody or have some connections to be able to get it, so.
And there's lots of free money, the problem is, is how do you make it work with whatever project you're trying to.
Right, you've got to have involvement in it, I mean, it's not just.
Well, and things are pretty particular, you know, this is going to be a very easy grant for for us to manage because it's, you know, they they went and sought us out because we meet the criteria. And a lot of times, you know, you almost have to bend what you're doing to fit the criteria. And so sometimes that becomes problematic.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. Right, at this time, we will move to public comment. Okay, no public comment, we will move to tonight's consent agenda. Do you approve?
Second.
Yeah, we're both in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Take us to some old business. This time we'll have a second reading, bill number four six zero two. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three year contract for the for the provision of cemetery lawn mowing and maintenance services with K and J Landscaping of St. Genevieve, Missouri. In an amount not to exceed fifty thousand four hundred dollars over three years. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Fahy? Alderman Clacarn?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-six zero two now becomes ordinance forty-five twenty-four.
Thank you. This will be another second reading, this will be for bill number four six zero four. This is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with McLean and Company as municipal advisors for the city of St. Genevieve. Do you approve?
Second.
Motion and second, Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Fahy?
Yes.
Alderman Clacarn?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Eight yes and zero no's. Bill number forty-six zero four now becomes ordinance forty-five twenty-five.
Thank you. And lastly, we have a second reading of bill number four six zero five. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve amending chapter two hundred Police Department of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances by adding section two hundred dot one hundred. In regards to the mineral area major case squad.
Prove, prove. Second.
Motion and second, Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Fahy?
Yes.
Alderman Clacarn?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-six zero five now becomes ordinance forty-five twenty-six.
Any other business to discuss at this time? With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Okay, approval of finance at Jim?
Motion and second. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Start with the work session item number one, this is stormwater review for drainage area six.
So we have the Smith and Company do the, we're working on the draft of subdivision for that property. While they're doing that, instead of doubling up on it, have it talked into the same type of hydrology and work. Ask Smith and Company to start work and look at that area, get the hydrology, figure out the numbers. And then see if there are any problems likely to look at in all the other that we've that we've had reviewed. And they really didn't find anything. They talked about the detention basin, then at this point, really, it was created when we created the street, but it's not really being maintained because there's nothing, nothing flowing into it at this point, except for the ground that's there. So that's the farmland that's on the south side of the highway, the highway, south side of the street. So I sent a note back to him saying, well, we have an issue that if it goes into a sinkhole, we have some complaints of the, not enough drainage of that water. After they tore out all the trees, now there's some dikes that have been put in, some concrete areas that have been just filled. And their response was, yeah, that's true, but if there's a subdivision that goes in, probably it will require that there be a detention basin. So that'll be included with some of that, with some of that that goes on at that point. But I wanted you to know that we had looked at this area, we had the hydrology done, we've had the information put together. If we need to do anything elsewhere that we can, that would one of the one of the areas that you requested we look at. Any questions?
Take us to work session item number two.
Can I, can I, before we do that number two, and I know it's on a gym, can you just get an update on Jefferson Street sidewalks? I meant to ask that earlier. It's just weather related while we're.
Yeah, so the second wall has been poured up against the houses and the concrete foundations. We're just now going to have to wait, rain kind of slow this down. Well, whether or rain slows down. So next up, we'll be putting in the putting in the sidewalk slabs on top. They're making progress slowly, but surely.
I didn't mean the rough agenda, but I just had.
It is stormwater.
That's true.
Take us to work session item number two, this is regards to the progress Parkway infrastructure. There's an option to close this as well.
So we have an agreement, we have an agreement on the table, it's been presented to us, we discussed it. I believe that any other discussion that we have involved with this property probably should be in a closed session. There may be parts of it that Mark will say, let's hold off and we'll maybe come back in session and discuss outside of that. But if we get into some specifics and we are looking at funding for this, then I think it involves that contractual, the contract that we are discussing. And that we should close in and discuss without, because we're still talking about real estate.
Go to a closed session to discuss real estate?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to go in the closed session, correct?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to go into closed session, correct? Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Cluckhorn?
Yes.
Alderman Fahy?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Ivan? Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Motion carries six, six.